To order. Oh, we got, the recording is underway and welcome to councilors. Just want to mention that Council Sereno has, has got a problem with his back. Wasn't able to join us last night accessibility and will be joining us online tonight. He did join us for a bit during accessibility meeting. He had some difficulties and I don't know if that caused his departure or he caused it.
He was having.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he may excuse himself tonight as well if he's not able to continue with it. So welcome and welcome Mark and Bruce and Pat. Pat, you're back to Purling today?
Yes, I was.
Yeah, joined the crowd, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Who?
That was a happy scene.
I felt a little bit happy when I said I was leaving. All right, call the meeting to order and approve of the agenda. Does anybody have any, any additions? Just to mention, we do have a number of pieces of correspondence and we'll list them when we get to correspondence. Through those. Okay, can I have a motion then to approve the agenda? Counselor Goddard seconded by Deputy Mayor. Oops, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and let's move on to approval of the minutes of council minutes, January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Anybody note any errors or admissions in those? No, hearing none, then we'll put it to circulate it. And item B is the special counts meeting, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Anybody note any errors or admissions in those? We'll prove those are circulated as well. And we'll move along to our action items. Speaker, Speaker O'Connell.
Sorry, I was texting. It's not happening.
No, we'll see, the link doesn't seem to be working for, for Justin, but I'm not sure whether the link to the meetings, I'm not sure.
The difficulties last night.
But I think they were doing it through teams as opposed to, oh, somebody's trying to join. I see an ID coming up there.
Well, this might be an opportune time then to pass around. That's always a great time. Good news. Yeah, thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Justin.
Hey, how's it going?
Are you able to turn your video on, Dustin?
Uh, yeah, I can. I was kind of just leaving it off so you don't have to see me grimace.
Yeah, for council, unfortunately, you do have to have it on.
And you see me.
We're good, Captain. All in feeling better soon. Counselor, we are just on the review of the action items.
Okay.
So, as you can see, we're still have a number of action items in progress. A few were followed up on, but I can take any questions. I don't know, Erin, if you want to just give a brief update on the trail clearing, connector trail clearing, based on what you gave the feedback on?
I can, yeah, so the connector trails, there's four connector trails that are listed in the winter maintenance policy, which was last updated in twenty twenty two. Speaking with the field crews, we've never consistently cleared the trails for various reasons. One of the reasons is we really can't do anything until the ground freezes, which, which is usually late January at best. This year, you know, the ground's frozen now, so there's no reason why we can't do it. And it's always been done after everything else is done. So the roads and the sidewalks and the parking lots and stone with a long commercial and things like that. What I've kind of also discussed with the field guys is we probably need to revise that policy. It's a, that policy is from, I believe, two thousand and seven. It's had reviews over the years, but you know, it has been a few years since then. And so I think we need to revise that again. In one of two ways, we need to make it state what we're doing or we need to, you know, as a larger group, evaluate what we want done and then make sure we can actually do that and achieve that. To do much more than, to do anything prior to the ground freezing would translate to a lot of repair maintenance in the spring, of course. And really it comes down to we need the ground structurally stable enough to handle file equipment. It would be the sidewalk machines, so those aren't quite here. If you're going to pick up for it. So that's, that's really where we're at with that.
Well, thank you for that. And I think that's perhaps a really good idea, given that you now have an accessibility plan and we have a, you know, aggressive act transportation plan that those all, that would be priority within those. So we probably should connect some of those as well. So good idea to have a review of that at some point where it fits our schedule.
Yep, I can have something ready after a bunch of sessions.
All right, that was my question, when do you think, what timeline do you need in order to come up with those recommendations?
Could I make a suggestion that we have it in ready to come for before next winter clearing season?
Just wanted to know the date.
Makes good sense.
Gives us time to discuss it and if accessibility is going to have some feedback on it, it would give time to take it to those communities.
Welcome, Crystal. Glad to have you aboard. Thanks for joining us. Hope you can hear us all right? Not or something? Okay. Well, she think that's it. Thank you. Any other questions of the action items?
Just. Do you push it because for the parks, my laws present to the public feedback and it's a progress?
And so we don't have that for this evening, but if council still wants to proceed with having those costs considered in the operating budget, we can flush them out for the, the public session.
Any others?
Maybe we could get some direction on that.
You want to do that now or when we're going to look at the budget again, would you?
Yeah, during the capital, even though it's operating.
Okay, we'll spend a minute on that.
Thank you.
So to you two to make sure it comes up. Okay. Anything else on the action items? So we did schedule a presentation for Valley Connect to reach association.
I've reached out to them to see if April works for them and I just haven't heard back yet.
Okay, any further questions on those? And we're tracking the ones that come up today to deal with. All right, we're ready to move on to new business and we have, the first item is our MPS and LUB plan update. So it's been a bit of time since we had our last session around this, it's actually with the previous council. So going to ask Crystal to, to speak a little bit, bring us up to speed on where we are and, and how we would like to move forward. Crystal?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you confirm you can hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. So it has been a little bit of time. It's been a minute since we've been thinking about the MPS and LUB. So just to remind you that before the last municipal election, council did review the MPS and LUB and did a significant amount of work with the public and came to a second reading with a set of draft documents that were fairly well endorsed, except for really one key issue, which related to maintaining the R1 type zoning in certain areas of town. And council at that time decided to not proceed with second reading with those draft documents. But based on the conversation with council at the time, it seemed clear that they wanted to revisit these documents and come up with a solution for the R1 issues. So now there's a new council in place and in consultation and with your CAO, this plan to get these new documents, planning documents through the approval process is in front of you tonight. So the next steps that are being proposed, and this is a very limited scope of work. So what's being proposed is essentially to take the draft documents as they were previously drafted and make changes to protect certain neighborhoods in town to keep some version of that R1 zoning in those key areas and basically keep the documents as they currently are with this one change. So this would involve a preliminary meeting with PAC, one public meeting to take that out for the public to comment on the proposed changes, bringing it back to PAC who would make a recommendation to council for first reading, then public hearing and second reading with the goal of getting this done quickly and efficiently with a very limited scope. So this is not opening up the whole document, but it's really focused on just addressing the concerns around the R1 zone. And there's a price attached with that and, which is twelve thousand dollars plus any expenses. And really the deliverables are two, two PAC meetings. So that meaning, means that we would sort of walk PAC three, walk PAC through the documents at the first meeting, sort of define those two key areas, two or three key areas of town, maybe that were, where the R1 type zoning should be maintained, getting some public input on that, bringing it back to PAC for their final recommendation, and then attending first reading, the public hearing and second reading and having two versions of the draft documents throughout the process. So it's a really streamlined, limited scope project, get the required documents through council and onto the minister for his review.
Okay, so just before we get into discussion, so what we need to do tonight is to have a discussion on the scope that she's presenting, which would be our task, thinking back to what happened and, and where we left off. And then to, we would need an approval to proceed prior to the budget with the amount that's identified there unless we change the scope. Then it would have to go back to Crystal to review the cost if we decide to do more than what's there. So I'd like to entertain a good, healthy discussion on what this is all about. So we all understand before we go right back to that.
Actually, so this isn't a, this isn't a huge question. I'm just looking at the dates and noticing that the year is twenty twenty four.
Oh, sorry, twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
I'm just.
That's a great place to start.
I am working on my time traveling machine, so, but yeah, I changed the first two dates, so thank you. Good catch. The other thing, Mr. Mayor, if I might just add on to it, it is possible perhaps to limit the scope even more, but it's, it would be difficult. So I think this is pretty close to the minimum that you, you can do to go through the process again. So it would be hard pressed to sort of do too many more reductions in the scope. Maybe the only thing is just one PAC meeting. But otherwise you can't really get away with one, less than one public meeting.
So the time issue of the twenty four is probably a good segue into what we need to do is remember back because as, as Crystal's mentioned, we've gone through the whole MPS review piece. So try to remember the steps, the process. We went through that, the public meetings that we had. And then when the issue that we had the most trouble with was seemed to be around the single family dwelling. And at that point, and tonight, the direction is that seems to be the one item that needs to be addressed, not all the other things in that MPS review. And that's what we're kind of want to make sure we're clear on and, and that we're asking or she's suggesting and we're asking is to, just when we go back to begin the review of this, it's only on that one item. So questions or concerns, counsel?
So as a new counselor who didn't participate in the process, is there an opportunity for, and who is on the PAC? Is there an opportunity for me to really get so I understand all of the other things that are in there? So I don't sort of go down a rabbit hole that I shouldn't be going down because I don't understand what happened. Just, I'm just asking.
I would say yes. We can look at doing that either individually or it's perhaps not a bad suggestion when we have our next PAC meeting to make sure we have the background on that. So they're clear on, on where we're going as well. Cause we're, the idea is for us to okay with the scope and then we're going to send it back to, to PAC to focus on the specific piece here that we're kind of talking about, so.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, the whole reason we're having two PAC meetings is exactly for that reason. The first PAC, because there are so many new members of PAC to kind of review the document as a whole and brief them on what happened during the last process. So that's why there are two PAC meetings, not just one. So the first meeting in whatever the date of that, I think it's in April twenty twenty five, April twenty twenty five, is really to, to receive that briefing, as it says in the report, on the draft documents and then really to start to understand some of the public comments that came in around that R1 issue. So I see that as being sort of a couple hours just on that one issue with council so that, or with PAC, so you can ask all the questions that you need to ask.
And the documents are available on the site as well.
I, I was going to recommend that there's a really good report, Crystal, that you did for first reading, I believe, that highlighted sort of the key changes from the current MPS to the proposed. So I think we can just make sure that council has it on their SharePoint site. So you can also review it and come up to speed with what some of those changes were as well.
Deputy Mayor?
If we agree tonight not to change the R1 thing, could we not just pass the DASs? If we said, as some of us did going door to door, that, that was like a key issue for a lot of people. I went to the door too, especially in my area where I live, was the R1 thing. Could we just agree to keep the R1 the way it is? Would we not be able to move forward with the rest of the changes that came up with the FBS?
So that would be an option, but I think at our, at our meeting, we suggested we need to go back and review it. And that's the idea of this is to say, that's what we need to review and that's the scope that we created at this point, Crystal has. So we could, you know, throw this all out and have that discussion here, but I'm not sure that that's A, do we, are we allowed, are we able to do that or do we need to go back? So A, we're not able to do that, so that, yeah.
The, the other piece of that, if I, if I can interject, is that the intention is not to keep all the existing R1. Then you might as well not adopt the new plan in many ways. That's a significant shift. So what we're, what this is proposing, if this is council's will, is to own, to identify the areas where the R1 type zoning, not because you don't want to keep the R1 because right now you can put apartment buildings in the R1 zone. So I don't think that's the intention, right? So we need to identify where there's going to be lower density zoning and, and, and put that zoning around those key areas. And then the intention would be to maintain the new zones as created, which really limit the apartment buildings and the higher density to certain areas of town. So the intention isn't to keep all R1 as it currently is zoned, unless there, that direction is from council, then this scope doesn't work. But if we're just talking about identifying the communities where that's of a particularly important, that's particularly important, then that's what this scope does. And we're anticipating it might be, it's probably two-ish areas, may, maybe, maybe three, but certainly not the, all the existing R1 because basically your whole community is R1. So if you're doing that, then, then it doesn't work to just keep all your R1 zoning.
Counselor James, just a question. Part of the problem was communications and public feedback. And that's where basically went off the rails at the end. And where do you see public hearings? I, I see it only in July, but where do you see the public being involved in this process? So that we make sure that we are heading in the right direction and not in the wrong subdivision, I guess is what I'd say.
Well, so there's two ways, and this is a really limited scope. It really is designed to be a limited scope. If council wants to increase the scope and have more public engagement, that's certainly something that you can require. But what I gave you is the least expensive, most straightforward approach. So the public meeting in late April, early May would basically take out those potential areas where the R1 type zoning will be, will remain. And that will be where the public has the opportunity. If you want to do more work with the public, then we would have to do it after the initial planning advisory committee and before PAC sees the draft documents. So it's certainly up to you to add more in there, but it's not anticipated with this scope.
Okay, Counselor Blackenack and then Deputy Mayor.
Am I right in understanding that committee meetings are open to the public or are some of them closed?
No.
They're open to the public. So there is an opportunity to make sure that the public does know when we're actually meeting, so they, at least they can hear the discussions and feel like they're heard. Is one, one thing that I think is helpful, and I'm hearing from people that they liked, they like the fact that they're feeling like they're being invited to things that we do. So again, that's an opportunity to sort of, I think that we can.
Yes, Jen.
Did you hear?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I thought you were going to comment on that. No?
I was going to talk, comment on communications, but if.
Okay.
Or Deputy Mayor loses.
I was just going to ask what the additional cost would be for the, for consultation. I'd like to know the final price, but I think it's worth it.
Each piece costs more. So it depends on how much more we put in. So if we, to get that, what we have to determine tonight what we wanted and then ask Crystal to price it out and get back to us. So we could, I mean, maybe if you got one or two things, she might be able to do it quickly. But I, I would think that we would, to be fair to her, we would give her proper time to price the additional things we would want.
And I.
So if you're on now.
I just wanted to comment to that is I think council needs to determine why and how much additional consultation. So if the only scope of the work is to go out about the areas that you're promoting for to keep as R1, after one or two meetings, how many more meetings can you have where you would hear something different? I think that what staff will do, because it's outside of this scope, is use all of the communication tools we have to make sure that members of the public have the dates of the public meeting, have an opportunity to submit comments directly to staff so that they can pass those along. And we did do notices in all of the tax bills. We put a flyer directly in the mail. The only way that the public came to the meeting was when we sent them individual addressed letters. And so I, I would hope, and I think I'm hearing that from council, is to have some support and making sure that when we put out those newsletters and on the website, because we can't, well, we could, if you want us to pay a mail, a letter to everyone individually, we could do that for the meeting, but we would be doing that for the public hearing. So we just get some direction outside of Crystal's work on what you would like to spend additional communications money on.
So that's a separate issue than what we're dealing with tonight, although you want to do more communication, that's not Crystal's work, so. It's on the scope of this.
And if I could just add to this, this is, you know, the, this, the, the cost, the true cost of this to the municipality is more than just the scope. And I guess that's where, where Jen is, is getting at, is that it's, even with this, there's a chunk of Krista's time that will have to be used to support this. So it's also a staff capacity issue. So when you're thinking about, an engagement often falls to the local, like, to your staff to organize, to advertise, to respond to. So that's also a consideration as you go forward. Jen, is that a fair statement?
Yep.
So this would allow for the public meetings where it's being discussed, one engagement session to get feedback before the PAC, here's what the public said, then for PAC to recommend to council where they think the R1 zones, if any, should remain. And then council to have first reading where they would consider whether they're ready to move it on to a public hearing. And then the public hearing would be another opportunity for the public to come out and address council directly before making that decision. So there's two, one engagement session and one stand up and tell us what you think. And then there'll be opportunities throughout that for members of the public to reach out to staff and provide comments or to council.
Counselor Wolf? So I'm, I very much like the proposal because it's in front of us. I'm really zeroing in on that issue that, just noticing as I'm on the screen, my straw is right in front of my face. I, I like the proposal and how it's, how it's based up there and how the focus is on that R1 issue. My own piece is, is possibly to throw a wrench in a little bit of that timeline in that I am away for 10 days at the end of April. So I'm away from the eighteenth until the twenty eighth. And, and even under virtual circumstances, I wouldn't be able to make it for, for a meeting at that time.
So we could lean more to early May?
Yeah.
I leave the thirtieth and get back by seventh, and I am indisposed and will not be able to reach that. Just throw that there as well.
We'll take those under consideration too as we get there. Again, this is a kind of the timeline, this is kind of a basic timeline, so. Any counsel?
Just a, last time we went through this, big concern was when that letter came out and that, that was spelled out. And the letter came out and people reacted to that. Is there any way that we can move that forward ahead of the public hearing? So that the public has an understanding that this is what it looks like is the best option. These are things that are going to be discussed. Please let your, let your opinions be known as soon as possible and we will have the follow-up public meetings to, to address them if, as they come forward. Can that be put, can the horse be put before the cart, is what I'm asking?
Yes and no. So some of that will require direction from council on exactly what you want to put out there for feedback on. So at what point in the process are you comfortable with saying this is what we're considering? But absolutely, we can do that. And I think one thing we've learned through all of our public hearings is not to say your property is being rezoned, it's your property is being considered for rezoning. So that key word that we heard that a lot and we've heard it a few other times. So we've taken that into consideration is when we do that communication, it's not worded as. So we've taken that into consideration is when we do that communication, it's not worded as this is an automatic. This is what you're being invited to provide feedback on. So I think that, um, the comments you made, we can definitely take those and try to ensure that we're out ahead as much as we can be. Um, so that the public has more time to digest and get the information.
Other than that, I, I'm supportive of the process. I see that as merit. We do have to move with this because it's been, what, 20 years since the last one was done?
2012, I believe.
Oh, 12, so, no, 20.
Not 20, but.
Yeah, they're close. And, and, uh, the old way of doing things, although may have been right at the time, is not necessarily right today.
Well, and we are, say we're in the, while that left, when we left off, we were very near completion of it. Right? And then we had the one issue, then the election, and so that's delayed us. So I think we have, uh, we have some responsibility to get this back to the, uh, to the community and our residents and the public in a reasonable, timely fashion. And I think we're now hovering on the extremity of that. Um, cause I think there was some expectation that we would be right back at this to resolve this. So there's still, it's still out there in the community as an unresolved piece. And, uh, so, and I think that's one of the reasons to, to be targeted and specific is because there's appeared to be targeted, specific issues. So let's focus on those to get it done as opposed to opening up the whole thing again. So that's, that's where we're at with this. Okay, so, uh, if we're all good with this, and I just kinda wanna make sure, I'm gonna just do a little kind of nod of consensus around the table. We're not gonna. Councilor Doherty, you're okay?
One thing. As far as how things are presented, uh, we already know there was an impression that this was already a done deal. Some people thought their property had been rezoned. And in here, it's a public meeting for late April. Uh, it supports that idea by saying this particularly where the single unit zoning is reinstalled or reinstated. So it's in effect saying, yeah, that's been removed. That should, that should actually be saying that the zoning is to be retained as is, not reinstated.
So I, it, it, so I, I think what, so it's not going to be left as, as is the R1 zone. It can't be, because right now you can put development agree, you can have apartment buildings in the R1 zone, right? By development agreement. So it's not going to be retained in the fashion that it is. So you'll see, so I take your point about reinstated. But where, where the R1 zoning will be, type zoning will be integrated into the new plan. Or, so I, I, we're, I appreciate your clarity there. But I want to be really clear that you cannot keep the R1 zone as it's currently written in policy in that because it allows for more density than what I think people want there. So the intention here is really to create a zone that allows limited opportunity for a, a, additional uses aside from single unit dwellings. And I think that's what we heard the community wanted there.
Exactly, so the, the two conflicting pieces of that was that the present zoning allowed for as many as four units, which shocked people.
No.
Right?
The current.
The, the present one, the current.
Allows up to 20 units by development agreement or, yeah, so the current allows more than.
And the switch was gonna allow.
Four.
Right, as of right. So they didn't, nobody wanted either one, either situation, no, I shouldn't say nobody. The concern was people didn't, some people didn't want one, didn't want the other. So that's what Crystal's referring to with the, the fact that just leaving it was not, is not well supported. Anyhow, better supported than the change. So that's why we need to come up with something else. Okay, so we're, we're good with providing direction and the staff to proceed with this?
I'm, I'm fine with it, with the understanding that the R1 will clarify exactly what can happen in there in those R1 zones. Because, uh, there won't be people that will come back and say, oh, I have a office in my basement. And, or I want to have a little, uh, knick knack shop in my garage. As long as we have clarification of what is within that new, modern R1 zone.
And that's what we're sending back to PAC. Okay, put those parameters on.
So, and I think the important thing is, you know, those, those things are well underst, I mean, R1s are not modern. They're a, they're a very sort of antiquated type of zoning, but, but, uh, it, some communities have decided to keep it, fair enough. So things like home occupations, all that sort of thing will be, uh, you already have those in your bylaw for the R1, so those are easy. The trick of all of this is going to be defined what areas will keep that R1 type zoning. And that's really going to come down to gaining the input for, uh, from PAC and, um, and, and moving through the, and the input from the public. So those two things will, will come together. And then the second PAC meeting, there'll be a proposal for where those, um, R1 type zones will be. And it will be limited to certain key, it's certain areas that, um, this community has determined are important to maintain like that. And then they will come to council. Council will either give first reading or send it back for more work to PAC. And then once you give, whatever you give first reading to, there will have to be a letter notification for the public hearing. So that's sort of the, how the process will work. You can do as many letters or, um, uh, communications while it's at the PAC level. But once you give first reading and it goes to public hearing, that's your draft that you're seeking comment on through your formal public hearing process. So I just wanna make that clear. So when you go to receive it at first reading and you don't like it, you send it back to PAC to do more work and maybe hold more public meetings. That's where your control really lies.
Said one of the thing, one of the things we talked about is actually changing the name. Um, this R1 to, to try to add more clarity to our, to the zones. And, you know, that's to be determined, but that's been some of the challenge too with this is what does that really mean? And so if we can get, seek clarity in, in the naming, that may be very helpful in the future. People understanding what, what they can't get to, so that'll be a piece of the work that you can do as well. So just checking in, and I'm sorry I haven't noticed, but I'm sure Crystal will keep me up to date. Councilor Serino, did you have anything that you wanted to?
Uh, no, no, that's all good to me. So it all sounds good, I just let them do their work and see what they come up with.
And, thank you. Okay, so we're okay with the scope, then we'll go on to the, the motion to, uh, um, to approve the process based on the budget, $12,000 to be funded in the 25, 26 operating budget. So we're, we're gonna, what we're gonna do is before we approve the, we get to the budget stuff, we're approving, we're spending this so they can start, Crystal can proceed. So it's kind of what we're looking for here to do that. Would anyone like to make that one?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor James, and Secretary, Councilor Walsh. Any further discussion on that?
Just again, that the communication piece will be in there that Councilor James brought up.
Okay, we'll look to staff for that, but I think, I think we all received that message loud and clear. And when we say it, how we say it's really important. Yeah. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, motion's carried. Crystal, thank you very much for joining us, and so we'll see you one way or the other Thursday night then.
Yeah. Thank you, goodnight.
Enjoy everything.
Night.
Night.
Bye, Crystal. Okay, item B now is our audit at services, and you have a report there. My Director of Finance, who is going to take us through the tender award. You see there?
Sure, thank you. Uh, so the town slash VEC went out for auditing services. So this is something that hasn't been done in a number of years, but generally you would do this every five years. Um, so we went out to tender, we received two tender responses. Uh, one from Dome Grant Thornton, the other from M N P. Uh, both responses were from credible, experienced auditing firms. Um, we did a scoring matrix where, um, we reviewed the tender submissions for understanding of the project, proposed approach and methodology, experience and qualifications, cost effective effectiveness and references. Um, so both bids submissions had experienced and qualified individuals. Um, lots of experience with municipal audits. Um, uh, the Dome Grant Thornton is a local firm in Kenville. Uh, M N P was located in Sydney. And when it came to the plan and approach, um, the local one, being the Dome Grant Thornton, does offer onsite and/or, um, hybrid approach, which would include, uh, virtual sharing of resources as well. Uh, whereas M N P was more of that virtual support. Um, so from our staff perspective, we did find that the local having a relationship um, and having that opportunity to have that support onsite was more favorable. Um, references came in, um, well for Dome Grant Thornton. Um, also pretty good for M N P. Um, but perhaps a little bit more favorable for Dome Grant Thornton. And the fee structures, um, over the five-year term in which we tendered for, um, Dome Grant Thornton's fees are approximately $32,000 less than, than M N P's. Um, so a bit more favorable there for the audit perspective as well. Um, and they offered some flexibility, um, with their audit schedule as well. Uh, so one thing we're looking to implement, which we haven't had, uh, with the previous auditor, is to conduct an interim audit, um, which essentially your plan begins in January, February. Um, then, you know, we continue with the fieldwork June, July. Um, and then the goal is to have draft statements approved in August, which allows, um, our financial team the opportunity to prepare the financial information return for the province in September, uh, to meet the September 30th deadline. Um, so staff is very pleased with the proposed plan, um, from Dome Grant Thornton. And, uh, assuming staff gets the information, um, from all IMSA organizations, um, including area in a timely manner, then we're confident that we are on track to meet those deadlines. Um, so with that, we did present this information to our audit committee. Um, and if the chair has anything that he would like to add, he's more than welcome to. But it's my understanding that the committee has supported the recommendation, um, to approve the five-year contracted audit services to Dome Grant Thornton.
Thank you very much, uh, as a chair, the only thing I'd add is that, uh, Dome Grant Thornton is recognized nationally.
Yes.
And, uh, is a very reputable firm, as you outlined. Um, all the, all the committee members reviewed the tenders and, uh, recommended for Dome Grant Thornton to be put forward. And I support that recommendation and, uh, would make a motion for that, to that as well.
We have a second, Deputy Mayor. Okay, any further discussion on, on this, Councilor?
What was the total bid?
Uh, the total over the five-year term, uh, for Dome Grant Thornton is 220,725. So for 25, like fiscal year end 2025, um, it is 39,785. And it inflates by an average of 5% every year thereafter.
Any further questions or discussion? See the finger though. It's not really, you know.
No, I mean, I have lots of experience with Grant Thornton in my household, so I couldn't be happier to have.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and if you don't mind it, our motion is carried. And is it appropriate that we send a letter of thank you to our previous auditor?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll see that that gets done, we'll kind of figure out who's best to do that.
Yes.
All right. Great, okay, let's move on to the next item C, which is the boxcar deck funding. So we're talking about the existing deck there now. We're not talking about any future work on the boxcar, so. I guess, Jennifer, Jennifer sticks, no, Lisa has that one again.
Yeah, take us through that. And so in our, um, 22, 23 budget, um, there were funds identified for, um, I don't know if you call it refurbishing for the boxcars. Uh, the project wasn't completed during that year and got carried forward into the 23, 24 budget. Um, through the transition, I guess there was carry forward of, um, $55,000 into the 23, 24 budget. Um, 15 of that was identified for, uh, the Mill Street Trailhead, which had, um, gravel and some drainage done for it. And then 40,000 was identified for, uh, deck for the boxcars. Um, in that budget, we had identified $28,000 that carried forward grant funds. However, it wasn't actually grant funds that were identified in the previous year's budget. So that was just a little bit of a breakdown between the transition between myself and then the previous Director of Finance. So we did get $10,000, um, from a grant toward the building of the deck, um, on the boxcar. Um, went out for RFP, did not get any, uh, submissions for that. And then I believe Community Development, uh, excuse me, to Soul Source with, uh, three quotes. Um, hillside, hilltop, sorry, um, construction was successful. The cost that they had come in with their quote was 55,000. Um, the final project that got completed this fiscal year, um, ended up over the 55,000. Um, so it leaves us looking for $40,000, um, from operating reserves to cover off, uh, the variance in the expense.
So we need a motion for that. So, Councilor Doherty?
We can, it's gotta be paid.
Yes.
And the Secretary?
I'll second it.
Councilor James? And, uh, okay, any further discussion on this?
Just grumble about those. Yep, it's, it's on my mind too, but just a noted grumble, that's all.
So we, we have two, gotta be paid and one noted grumble.
Yeah.
There, yeah.
What, what, what options do we have for use of this is, is probably the question in the future.
Exactly. Okay, hearing no further discussion on that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to our 109, Master Evan, do unsightly property update. As you remember from the last meeting, we directed staff to proceed with this one, so Jennifer?
So given the work that's been done on the budget and some other competing priorities, um, I have not had the opportunity to prepare the order, um, in full as directed by council to bring back to this meeting. Um, I had updated the mayor on this and was recommended that I come and give that update to council, that the order has not been prepared, given that it's winter and much of the, um, vehicles, but also other debris that's on the property would be hard to move right now. I'm just requesting and notifying council that this will move to the March council meeting to bring back the order. So that's my update, and I can take any questions, but, um, just wanted to keep you posted of what was happening there.
Just a question, March, there may still be significant.
Just question, March, there may still be significant amount of snow on the ground. It will be hard, if there is, it'll be hard to observe or make a recommendation, should we say, at a point of time that will allow full observation of the, of the site.
That would be appreciated if rest of council is in support.
We don't know for big dates, it's not correct here, we're doing lots of stuff, so yeah, sounds good to me.
And I will just, if it's not, I will add it, I believe it is in the action is, but if it's not, I'll add it there at least so that it's an ongoing action item so that council does see it, so we don't let it go. But we'll try to bring it back as soon as we are able to fully assess the situation and ensure that when an order is given, the work can be done anytime you need or within the order that is provided for the property. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So the next item of new business will be our, our review of the capital budget. So if you remember, we've worked our way through the operating and one view of the capital and another view of the operating and now round of the capital budget.
So yeah, just gonna take it after you put it up on the screen.
Yeah. So putting up the capital budget items for this, this year.
Oh yes, sorry, into council's share plan under the twenty-five, twenty-six. Council's looking for it.
So we'll go first to see, Lisa, do you have any updates or any changes, additions, comments on any of these items since our last review of these?
No, I, I don't, looking around, I don't, oh, I do have one.
Okay.
I'm thinking, I'm like, I was going to say, I don't actually have capital projects, but I do have one in this five-year plan. So I did get an update on a potential financial system. So using that as kind of a placeholder for the cost of a financial system. Again, you know, we're still really early in the process and we'll be going through scoping and tendering processes as we move forward. But the price tag that has come in for that one for Berwick's, like the town's component, would be three hundred and seventy-one thousand.
So much better than this. That quarter, three quarters are very valid, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I picked that number up immediately.
So, well, and again, you know, we're still gonna scope and go, but I, I felt that was a more palatable and realistic quote. And it is a municipal software, which is again a niche software that we require, so.
And timeline set was.
So we currently have that in year two of the budget. And the goal with that one would be that we would work through twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal to work through the implementation with the go-live date of April first, twenty twenty-seven.
All right, and now look to Aaron to see if there's any updates or changes in any of his items that are there.
We've, the boxcar, right now, you know, in V one, we have, I don't know if this is yours, Katie.
No, go ahead, please.
But depending on what we decide to do as, as an organization with the boxcars, that could be reduced by about ninety percent. Another minor change, which is about a five thousand.
Can I stop there? So at the last meeting, we provided some direction for minimal upgrades that we talked about. So you're telling me the new quote for that is ninety percent of the ninety thousand?
So we, we had a hundred thousand in version one of the capital.
Ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand.
Well, with the talk that it could be a hundred or more, but yeah, okay.
And, you know, we, we, we're working a scope right now with the ballpark of ten to fifteen thousand.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Another very minor change would be to, for the, for the project asset management, software implementation. We originally had twenty-three thousand in there, that's down closer to eighteen thousand. Just reevaluating the quotes and documentation we have. That's that one that's right.
Twenty-three, four is now eighteen?
Eighteen to ninety.
Okay.
Kind of update on transportation.
We also, we're, we're also interested in moving the comprehensive transportation plan. Which would be an engineered document forward to year one. That has a estimated project cost of a hundred thousand dollars. But by moving that forward, that would allow us to defer any design or construction on roads until that document is complete. So that would be a net increase of, that would be, we, we could really say that would be a net decrease of twenty-five K in the sense that the last two items on this, on the screen right now could possibly be deferred to year two after that comprehensive transportation plan was complete.
So for this evening, we have made, had all these discussions at the staff level, but we didn't change anything yet because we were waiting to get more direction from council on any changes that you wanted to make. So on, in terms of what that end financial impact would be, we don't have those numbers for you, but we definitely would be looking for feedback on things that you want to move, you want to remove, or you want to add. That's the three that, or, or amend. So that's what we would be looking for direction on. And then we could prepare version two to come back and give you a sense of where that leaves us for the five-year budget.
So just some clarity on that before, so you're suggesting we could put in transportation plan at a hundred thousand? And we could then delete the Cottage Street, So Street, cost of seventy-five, and the Main Street to Mill Street for fifty?
We would defer those to year two or?
Yeah, okay, great.
Correct. I don't see any sense in doing those major projects until we know how the traffic is going to. What's the best way for traffic to move within the town?
Absolutely, and we have that discussion as well.
Yeah, and we kind of limited to that, I think the last meeting, it seemed to make some sense to the way.
With, with the caveat that the stormwater management plan would be the priority to complete, and then we would begin work on this one after that work is complete. So there's a timeline of June or something, August?
August.
Just so that we're not stretching our resources, because that is a concern about capacity of staff to manage multiple projects. So we believe that it's important and it should be done before the other streets, but we'd like to prioritize the stormwater management. Look at funding and everything for the grants for the transportation, but not begin actual work on it until after the stormwater management.
And just to clarification, I know H R is an important component to managing the projects, but in a lot of cases, H R, along with those, you have equipment that has to still operate within the town and be involved in those projects. Have you taken that into consideration, what equipment needs? Or what the town will be putting in place to get the best use out of our own resources? I E, equipment?
Not, so you're not referring to the transportation plan?
Not the plan, but we're looking down five years.
Yeah.
And if we're looking at doing, doing something within that five years, and it's gonna take our, take our backhoe of the snow removal during a period of time, that just doesn't make sense. That's for our snowplow crop, whatever it is.
We, right now, we have a existing fleet replacement in the capital plan. We don't have any anticipated increase in fleet size. And right now too, I mean, depending on what the outcome of the stormwater management plan is, if a lot of those actions are things we can do in-house, we haven't considered any net increase to our, our fleet because of that yet. That stormwater management plan right now, the guide, or the intent would be to bring something back to council in August. And the reason why we're pushing for August is so that we have time to start working any adjustments to the operating or capital budgets that we would need for what is now year two in our current budget. So those, those might appear next fiscal year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to envision the, not only the H R plan that's going forward, but how, how we're going to workflow any equipment that may be needed in these projects, if any. And if there's none, well, that's an easy answer. Usually it, you're saying, okay, someone's going out there with a backhoe, we need the backhoe operator, and we need the backup for to get that project done. So you're, I just want to make sure that you're taking that into consideration.
Yeah, too early yet to really get down to that granularity, I think. But I would suspect next fiscal year we'll have some adjustments.
Thank you.
So let's get Katie the same opportunity, if she has anything to add or suggest or talk about with, with any of her projects. Okay?
Because Aaron's still working.
Okay, just so, now we'll open up to council then, so, Councilor Davison.
Just a question, budget reduction in, at the boxcar. The, what, what are the plans for the ten thousand dollars? Can we have any plans at all? You're talking about a budget cost in there. Could you just review what that would entice or entitle?
Yeah, and so if we, last meeting, council had agreed at that point to support flooring as well as fixing the doors. And so that is what that would.
That's, and, and plugging the hole. The, the holes in the metal where there was a bridge at one point connecting the two boxcars, we would plug that with plywood. The doors need substantial work to get them operating again. So those would need to be removed, taken to a shop. Mill rights would need to bring equipment onsite to straighten the rails or cut the rails off and put new rails on. So the doors are forecasted to be around six thousand. Three-quarter inch plywood for the floor with labor is, is coming in to bring it up to ten thousand. And then, and, and any extra would go into possibly electrical work. Not full wiring, just, you know, to, to get one or two outlets, we would still need a mast and a meter and a bit of wire with labor also. So the fifteen, okay, the, the fifteen K story would be three-quarter inch subfloor, no insulation, plug the hole, basically put a sub, false wall on, on those sides of the boxcars and electric ready, but not wired. It, it would be the type of work that would make them usable during daylight hours for storage or, you know, trail support for rec. But it's also the type of work that if we didn't proceed, or did decide at a later date to fully trick them out, fully finish them, you know, all of that would physically be removed and we would kind of start from scratch. We are looking at, with the fifteen K, we could possibly add insulation on the flooring in addition to the plywood. It'd be a shame to put plywood down and rip it up in a few years' time, right? So if we could get styrofoam insulation with strapping within that budget, we would do that all.
I understand that there's a gap between the deck and the boxcars, which would be something that may have accessibility issues. And would that be covered as well? Or do you see that as being something that we'd have to work around?
I, I think we could attempt to work with the local general contractor. We might need to, I, I think we could, not very wood. You know, it's, it's, it's not a lot of wood or materials needed for that, and there's not a lot of labor. One thing that would not be, to be done within this budget would be to make the deck accessible relative to the doorway. You know, I, I, my understanding in today's accessibility guidelines is that should be a straight flush entrance or a ramp. You know, that, that would not be feasible within this fifteen K.
So in saying that, what you're saying is that our vision for that is just general storage in the future?
Bare bones, storage, you know.
Could Katie answer that question?
Yeah, you can answer that.
I don't think in the future that we would just let them use them as storage. We have had discussions around the table about possibilities, and we certainly open to all those things. But with the existing improvements, we could do equipment loans. We could partner with the library, with the museum to offer some type of special event or some types of programs out there. We could also look at having markets. I think there's a great potential there. As it, as it exists right now with the current zoning, we would be a bit limited when it, when it comes to offering a kind of business or anything. But we do, as far as events, programs, we'd have the ability to certainly explore those options. I, I, I think that the intention would be, yeah, to make them more accessible to the community and a public space rather than just storage.
Councilor Luke.
I know we've talked about the inside, do they need to be painted? It's like, I, I look at it as a roof or whatever, does that need to be done? Because I don't want to refinish my house inside to have my roof leak and ruin everything again inside. So I'm just saying that was brought at least by one person, that they needed to be painted and the cost of five thousand dollars. So I want to say, does that tie in? Is, not, not that we would do anything there, but does it need to be done? Is it to the point that it needs to be painted?
So I think we can have a lot of conversations about what can be done. And I know Katie has been looking at other options and talking to other funders. I think the fifteen thousand dollars that staff has identified would give us a bare minimum, but it would also give us an amount to leverage for other funding. So Katie can go away and if, bring back a proposal later on some options to consider, but this would at least allow us to have something to use as storage while we work on what that plan looks like without making too many cosmetic upgrades that would have to be redone in the future. So we're looking for counsel on whether the fifteen thousand ballpark is reasonable to take out of operating reserves and potentially use that to leverage additional funding to maybe paint it this year and look at how we might turn them into more than just storage.
I don't have a problem with, with that, the fifteen thousand of how to take this to the next level and look forward to a plan for coming in. To Deputy Minister Luke's comment is check the roof first, because I can tell you every burn that falls down in the province is a result of a leaking roof.
I would, I would agree, and I think we should, it's got to be roof tight for any purpose. So I think that we're trying to get to a step of which it has the bare minimum of usability. So if it's not roof tight, so I think that needs to be looked at. And if, you know, that's, if there's major issues with that, then we'll need to deal with that. And if the cost, maybe you have to come back if that seems to be, if it hasn't been looked at yet, but I would think that's. Yeah.
Well, I understand this, but sort of something certainly to follow along.
All right, so our job here tonight is to go through each one of these. And if there's any, anything we want to sharpen our pencils on, or talk about, or postpone or do, this is where we do that. So looking to counselors to, to continue down. So looking to councillors to, to continue down this list. Councillor Goddard, then councillor Quine.
Just to show what's, what's possible, what's feasible, here's a scenario that works for me. We don't buy a plow truck. We put a four-way stop in the middle of town and set the traffic light. So we put that Maple Avenue 75 grand off for a year. With a few other stops or little things, we can build up to about a half of it, half a million dollars. Out of that, 180,000, we're already short. Contract of maintenance, inter maintenance for the roads, not sidewalk, just the roads. Which would probably mean deleting one position in public works. But we would increase parks to the full term and hire a full-term bylaw officer. And we still have enough money left over to cut the tax a bit. So that's just a scenario, what could be done.
Appreciate that. You've got, you've given it some thought. Tonight, we want to focus, right now, we're going to focus just on the capital items. So some of your other suggestions around the operating piece will, will come back. The only operating item we were going to deal with tonight is?
Bylaw and parks position.
So, so just, you mentioned plow truck, just I wanted to, plow truck, four-way stop as opposed to fixing the lights. What else was on, sorry?
And the 75,000 for
Maple Avenue.
Maple Street.
Right, okay, which we had already, I think, talked about, so.
So we didn't mention that one specifically, but that, yes, we would include that as moving out that one. And we also talked about and forgot to mention about, at the least, moving the fixing of the four-way or the lights to next year until after we do the transportation plan. And I address whether the lights make sense there. So the only downside is if they do go down over the next year, you might have a flashing red there for a while. But I forgot to mention that we did consider moving that one out as well and help the transportation plan.
Okay, thank you. So two others?
You've covered the ones that I was thinking about and particularly, the lights, the question about the lights. Appreciate that it makes more sense to wait to make those decisions and collaborate.
Any, anyone else? And we got to remember to look for councillor Sereno and Deputy Mayor Loos.
I just, what are we going to get that day on the snowplow truck? What would cost? Like maybe it's not completely broken, maybe it could be fixed. I'm just saying less than a brand-new plow truck this year. So if you told me it took 25,000 to fix a frame in that, I'm more in that, put it out for a year or two, that, that'll work. I go through the spile person vehicles, will it pass? What will it take and weigh that out? So I need to know, are we at end of life with this plow truck? Right now, frame it might be, but I, I need to know that.
I'll look to Aaron to see if he can comment on that. And the light or possible.
Craft just for my own reference real quick, if I have a quick second. We do have feedback from the maintenance, the mechanic we use most times, their feedback is, you know, one of our plow trucks, they will not take the inspected again. Based on the condition of the frame from a rust standpoint. Now, that being said, anything can be fixed for a cost. You know, it just, it comes to a point where the maintenance becomes higher than the replacement cost. One of our plow trucks, in the past four weeks, we spent $9,000 in maintenance, keeping it on the road. And it's been offline one hundred of every five days because of breakdowns. So I would, I would expect if we make it till the end of March, that truck will not be on the road next winter. In a, in a legal sense, meaning safety inspection. And, and, you know, again, it is, that one plow truck in particular is at a point where the maintenance is becoming unrealistic to sustain.
Thank you.
I had a question raised by a resident around the value, the true value of the beautification of the new bridge. And wondering if that was, I'm just wondering if that would be a place. It's, I realize for the town, if there's other funding, it's not all that significant. And I personally, you know, think that there is value in the power.
I can speak to that a bit. So we've had meetings and I do think that that is, I'd like to have more accurate funding on that. I think that we had that allocated for that project due to the fact that we're getting pricing. And we're still looking at what that design might look like. And I think at this point, it's our understanding that they will replace existing with small changes at no cost. Assuming we're not adding substantial costs. So I think right now, and I'm working way right now to get pricing on lighting poles. So as soon as that pricing comes in, we'll be able to put that into the capital budget to have, to kind of reflect more accurate pricing. And I think that at this point, that will be the only cost associated with the beautification to the entrance of town. So, oh yeah, I just don't, yeah.
And you're working on a sketch that we can
Yes.
Get some, once it's at a more appropriate place, we can provide an update on what that might look like.
I think so, yeah. Only things that are above and beyond what would be right in, in prior to our project. So I don't, not sure it'll be that significant, but again, that's what we have there as a quick order and hopefully by our next meeting.
And the light poles can be phased, right? At this point, it can be just putting the wire in, and then the posts get purchased when we can afford to put the post up. And so it doesn't necessarily need, so I think that's, as she says, it's a, yeah. Anything else?
Just a question on the Grandview Manor flow meters. It's listed twice, I take it, it's only once.
It is once. In my sheet, it would look like it's duplicated because it was pulling from two different funding sources. So it is just one project, $12,000. But if you can see on the column close to the Zoom people's faces on the screen, it was those two funding sources. I just have to put them on different lines because they're different funding sources.
And given that we are trying to coordinate between the new subdivision going up there in Grandview Manor, putting in a connection. And they were originally planning to put in their own pumping station and there's been a significant savings to them. Like going, or I would think there'd be some savings by going through a connection through the new subdivision or the proposed new subdivision. Should that be part of towns or should that be part of, of the development or Grandview Manor? I don't know about the negotiations.
So that's a great question. Our bylaw does not currently require that they have a flow meter. So we were taking it upon ourselves and then through updates to our sewer bylaw, if there's any calibration or anything that needs to happen in the future, it'd be the responsibility of the manor. I would say, and I would argue that it's, it probably was a substantial savings in the beginning. But they designed it based on it not having their own pump station. So to them, there hasn't been a, a savings, apparently, the way that they've talked about it. So we haven't talked about them paying for the flow meter. It's not something that we can, or sorry, it is something we could go and have a discussion for, but at this point, we weren't making that request.
So how in the past, they've been putting product into, into our system? And how in the past have we charged them? And was that, was that by flow meter or nothing? We just best guess?
So the Manor Orchard Villa, Fundy Villa, those.
Orchard Fundy Manor.
Yeah, I think I've got them all right. So we charge them based on their bed or occupancy. And then we have the daily calculation for like an individual, it's so many meter flow. Yeah, I'm not good with the, the units clearly. Anyway, but it was determined that that's what an individual would have. So we take their beds and then the flow. And then that's how we calculate their percentage based on the sewer expenses required for the year. And we're recommending that it be changed to a flow meter to get a better and accurate reading of what they should be charged.
So there's no problem with the flow meter from an operational standpoint of a yearly basis?
They currently require even valley to calibrate their flow meter annually and then provide us with proof that they've done that. And they have been doing that. So we would build into our bylaw that would be required by Grandview Manor as well. But we need the bylaws first before we can change that bill. And that's on our plan for sort of the next three to six months.
And I know it's not a big cost, but it is, it is there. And I, maybe we can just get the flow meters are not a big item once they're installed. Are they, as I recall?
Yeah, once they're installed, they, you know, they need annual certification. Generally, they have a good lifespan, ten years plus in a lot of cases. Yeah, once, once they're installed, they're relatively maintenance-free. Part of that cost is just because you need to install it in a manor. So you, you know, you're installing a truck in your line, which is adding some cost.
And you got to be able to get down.
That's right.
Okay.
I guess my only other question was, we've got this perennial sign that fell down out of the one-on-one cost out there. And there's a cost there, I guess, if we're doing things on the bridge, does that really add a whole lot of value if to the town? Does anybody notice that that sign is gone because it was down for quite a while? No one really picked up on it for quite a while until someone else picked up the sign and went with it?
Yeah, apparently not many people noticed it because it sat there, well, it disappeared.
It disappeared, yes. I blame the snowman. The big snowman, yeah.
Any, anyone else? I, I have a couple of ones to question on, just so the addition, number one, the addition of physical barriers to separate, separate the roadway from exposed cabling. Tell us what that is again.
So that is related to the solar garden and it may not be required any longer. But if it is required, we were trying to get the developer, the contractor to pay for it. So this is related to a compliance issue.
Okay.
It will not be that much, but we can bring back an update on it.
I was like, you said if I have to be done, if that was a next time to change off.
So as you can see, it's currently in there with no cost to the town.
Yes. The, the next one, are we on track for the, at this point, for the, for number two, all of the work around the drum screen replacement? Like is this, this money going to be budgeted in this fiscal year or we expect any of this to shift over into another year?
Over two years.
Yeah.
Lisa just asked if we could talk about that.
Well, let's talk about that.
Well, no, I think, I think Aaron and I need to talk about it and we'll get the tenders that are out and the timelines. So the amount won't change, it's just when it's going to hit our books as well.
So what year it could be in the house split, okay? And fair enough, we got to you guys to talk about.
Yeah.
The, the design work is happening now and that design work should be finished by the summer. At which point we can do a tender for construction. And that tender for construction will be the bulk of this cost.
If we're in the summer, we're probably into next.
It's probably going to be a winter project. This water wastewater projects tend to be winter work. The flow is low, not getting any. So yeah, probably a significant portion of this would carry into year two.
Good, so that is an impact on how some of these numbers could roll out for this year. Would that be the?
So I wouldn't necessarily just look, sorry, look at the bottom line. It's more about your funding sources and how you're funding them, not about how much you're spending in those years. Really about how much you're spending in total is how I would, what I would say. So I wouldn't just look at the bottom line for this year's savings. Because if you're pushing it into next year and you're still paying for it out of debt, it's not decreasing your debt code much. Or out of reserves and you have no plans to replenish your reserves and you're still just drawing them down. So.
We wouldn't be financing.
Depends on what the project is.
Right, well, the project is the drums screen and it's a 600 and, or 6,600,000 dollar project.
And it has been identified as being successful in some grant programs as well. And the debt service on this would come through your sewer rates, so it wouldn't come through your tax base.
So not a significant place to.
So, no, I wouldn't say it would impact your taxes potentially, but definitely your sewer rates. And I was more, more curious from a cash flow perspective. So I would recommend leaving it there and then we'll be able to do a temporary borrowing resolution for a project of this magnitude. We'll need an operating line of credit. So it'll be a process to get those funds in place and then likely carry forward. Depending on the tender and construction season, you'll see carry forward coming over to year two. And this one, we don't, I would argue, we don't have a choice on.
Oh, no, I wasn't saying, I wasn't asking if, it was more of a when, like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The other one I wanted to ask about is, is Katie, is the, the work to be done for the existing park plan? And I know we were interested when we were doing the Centennial Park to have a pretty map done of the Rainthorpe Park as well. And that didn't happen at that time.
Right. So this was speaking to that, but also there has been discussion in the past about the playground, the location of the playground. So this was something that was also going to be added to the agenda, hopefully for the CDC meeting next week to look for some guidance and some information from the committee on what they feel would be best for that.
Okay, so this could include some playground preliminary work in the two to four.
Yeah, if the committee and the, and council feels that that is important, certainly, because it has been brought up around the table before. We didn't want to move that without a first team.
Okay, I think, is that still? So we had this plan. There it is, no, that's not it. But this one's still, yeah, here we are. This is the multi-generation park plan that was done in 2014.
Yeah.
Yeah, 2014. That we were, had been talking about the update to the design based on what actually exists over there. So that's for council's information, that's kind of what we're talking about. And this one is sad, you're 10 years. And we're talking about working up and wanting to, to work on an update. That's been kind of the conversation in the development committee around that. We can cover that back up this, we didn't need to take it any or something.
And how far have we come along with that plan?
Well, we, I mean, that's, that's the thing, we've been looking, some of those things have been done, some of them that haven't been, the whole idea would be to, to remap. so remap based on what is actually has taken place, because in ten years, we've done a lot of stuff over there.
I agree.
And we've done a lot of work, it just may not be that anymore, right? So that was the whole idea, if we're gonna have this one hanging over council chambers, maybe we should have an updated one, which is more accurate, so that's.
And if we get a better um like scope of the project, we can, again, go back and see if there's more accurate number we can improve. All, you know, how much I'm going to do for that.
Right, okay. All right, have we gone through the list enough? Any questions, council chambers?
We have one question.
Keep them coming, because this is where we're gonna.
And that, that is, and I think Director of Finance can, can answer my question. If we do, as laid out here, or at some point, can we have an indication of, of either grafting or uh some sort of uh charity of what this is going to do to our financing? And I know that you've shown this before, but even with these adjustments, what's it going to do for our financing in the future? Our cash flow as you, as you had mentioned earlier? And what's it going to do for our reserves? And what should we be putting into those reserves in order to keep us uh within at least the yellow zones of the uh financial measures indicators?
Okay. Um, well, at present, as I showed when we presented um draft one, we essentially can't afford to finance this plan as presented. Um, but what I can do when I bring back version two is add the scenarios in, so we can see the reserve transfers required to keep is council interested in both the operating and the combined reserve um FCI?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Sure, yep, okay. Um, then we can run what that looks like, um what would be required to get us to yellow and keep us in yellow. Um, and then I will make the adjustments on the bits that we've changed here and show the debt servicing. Um, I don't believe we've done anything significant um that we've talked about yet, which will impact the debt service. Um, I mean, even moving it out, we don't have enough debt that will be repaid within the five years to get us into a green or even a yellow state. Um, we still have a significant amount. It like, if you look at our FCI's today, they look good. Like, we're green, they look great. But if you look at the five-year projected plan, we have really heavy investment into our roads and streets that's proposed. Um, so that's where it starts to go red. Um, your sewer rates, as you'll see when we bring them back, I'm hoping around the beginning of March. Um, that's where you're gonna be looking at funding your environmental health, your wastewater treatment plant. Items, I mean, your big ticket item right now is phase two of this project at the plant. And again, relies heavily on your grant funding, so.
That's a question?
Yes.
So, oh, sorry.
So before she does that work, what we need to do is fine tune those items we just talked about to give them some direction, is that where you were?
Not, not quite, because I don't think they're gonna impact what she's doing significantly. Where, as I mentioned in the last meeting, we're gonna remove a lot of the roads and keep one maybe. Um, the biggest impact, I was gonna ask Lisa, is the sewer treatment plant. Does that affect our um debt service ratio, whether it's funded through sewer rate or town, right? It does. Um, but because, so when you calculate your debt service, it takes your own source operating revenue. So essentially, you're gonna increase your revenue through your sewer rates to offset your debt repayment. So that should have a net impact, but yes, they are both considered. But you would make them net to zero, so it's not gonna impact your ability to borrow safer streets or roads. And the um forecasted debt service that you provided, did that include the netting out? Yes. Okay, so that's why I'm saying what you decide tonight on year one is not gonna impact what she's already prepared. And this, the bigger question is the fire truck in year three. Because according to our forecasted debt service, we cannot afford to pay it when it comes due if we approve it this year for purchase. Well, you could afford it if you don't want to do your other projects. Yes, I think um what I would like to run these scenarios for the next version would be if council can identify perhaps one street that we would like to do. Um, and then I can input that into the debt service ratio and also some direction around the fire truck, because that was another big ticket item that we planned to borrow on. Um, that would be helpful, I think, to run those scenarios in a more realistic state and see where we lie um with the financial condition indicators.
Okay, so council has a question and then we'll just kind of refine how we move from year one and then go into a conversation on year two, three and?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So mine was, where's the sewer rate now, I'm sorry, I have that information from me, where we think it's going? I'm just, it's kind of like saying the taxes are here now and the taxes are going there now. I was just trying to get, so I could see it to know that, yes, that'll work to fund it or it won't too.
So right now, a single dwelling is one forty-four thirty-seven. Um, and again, all of your dwellings and businesses have multipliers on them depending on what the nature of the business or um the unit is. But single dwelling is that. Um, where we're going, I don't have an exact number at this point.
Ballpark it, I'll take a ballpark today.
I would say at, at least double or triple.
And that's, that's what I was.
Um, and again, I know council's brought this forward for a couple of years now, um even before I came. They haven't been reviewed since two thousand seventeen, I believe, so it has been held for quite some time as well.
So just, I, so all this conversation, I hope you didn't say that we didn't really need to do that, but um that we just did on year one?
No, sorry. I, oh, no, no, I think you're still very good information.
So we've agreed that the boxcars will be fifteen thousand, the software will be eighteen to ninety. We're gonna do the transportation plan and delete the Cotty Street and Foster Street. Uh, the light will be postponed till after the transportation plan. We're looking at Grandview Manor possibly play for the flow meter. Um, the two questions that came up, I'm not sure we had clear direction, is the pile truck? And uh the other one would have been the highway sign.
Excuse me?
So I, let's, let's take the highway sign, do we uh, is council thoughts on that? Do we wanna try to keep that in here for this year? Or do we want to uh postpone it or delete it?
I'd be, I would postpone it, just for the reason we all discussed that it has been down and there has not been. If we had outcry from everybody, but yes, I'd rather have.
Where are you running to town? Yes, it's nice to know that there's another exit coming up in our, and uh, Newark is the apple capital. But, you know, when you're coming into town, I'd like to see that on first. I would see that as more of a priority with the town looking very nice as you approach it and its borders.
We, we can.
Go ahead, Katie. Sorry. We do have the, an existing um welcome to Newark sign uh right before uh we, in the town entryway. So you're speaking to more of something along those lines and?
Well, the, you're not so much needing the uh Apple Capital sign on the highway, right?
Right.
Yeah, at this point.
That could be deferred, in my opinion.
Okay. Are we good with that?
Sorry, we missed, we missed that direction on being.
Well, we're talking about the highway sign and it hasn't been done yet. Yeah, we're still having the discussion whether or not we're gonna defer that. Yeah. Council, Walter?
So I'm at that half thought moment for a moment. Um, and that is, I mean, if we, if we're looking at signage and we're always looking for ways uh to work with our mural committee, maybe looking at like the cost of putting up that and developing, developing that with the mural society like something too.
I, I think the cost of that is simply the Department of Transportation's structure.
And we never found anything that like would show any sort of liability on them for keeping it up or no? Did they ever find the code for being able to reproduce the previous sign or?
I, I said, I would do it for you.
So.
Well, I'm not sure where that was left off about the uh?
So Aaron was looking at that and they hadn't got that back.
I, I never confirmed that they still have the design.
Wasn't it supposed to be tied to a code that was supposed to be on a sticker on the back of the other sign as well?
Yeah, they said if we can give them that code, they can find it and you can remind them.
Shouldn't they be able to go look at the back of the other sign to find the sticker?
Well, we did that for them, you can throw that into the picture and they're having to.
The design itself isn't um the bulk of the cost of that, it's just the creation of the sign.
Yeah.
So if I may, um, when I was in Middleton, we received a letter from the Community Identity Program, which this falls under. And it said that your sign is coming to the end of its useful life. If you'd like to replace it, it's ten thousand dollars, you pay that to them, they reproduce it and put it up. The additional cost would be if you want to design it and use colors other than the four primary colors that are in the um design and pay more. If you don't replace it at the time that they requested, then you're on the hook for the whole replacement, which includes the foundational structures, which then they came back to Aaron and said was eighteen thousand dollars. So we have no leeway in that cause, so of the twenty-five, eighteen to twenty of that is this the sign and then five to seven is for design.
The other thing, we have never formally complained to them about the loss of our sign.
Politically.
Yes, like writing the minister and saying, this is what happened. And seeing if they would compensate us for the sign. And I think we probably would maybe beneficial to exhaust some of those channels before we spend any of our money and when that becomes time to do that, like maybe we could, we could look at that first for sure and put off the uh the sign.
Yes, the first course of action may be to approach your M L, local M L A.
Well, that's been done numerous times and that hasn't got traction, but we, we didn't do it in writing, right? We didn't put it up there, something official which wouldn't be expected. So I think we could maybe take that a step further.
So you wanna prepare a letter to the Minister of Transportation or Labor Works or?
Yeah, um, to, so I think the letter would go to two or three people in the system, let's be identified, who, and our M L A, minister, the local director or whatever, district manager, whatever he's called.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, yeah.
Okay, so while that letter is being prepared and exhausted, are we deferring that cost? Or are we still keeping it so we hear that?
So.
I have a question around that, so I'm understanding that no matter, like if we're, if we're rebuilding the sign at our cost, it's that total cost, there's nothing that's, um, so putting it off is not going to change the cost. Is that what I understood? Like, if we defer this, this, yeah, we defer a decision, is, is there a great likelihood that our cost will be significantly more than what's there right now, that's my question?
So they, they were the ones that provided the cost based on
Yeah.
whatever the cost is now to do it, so the assumption would be if we wait a few years, that cost is likely gonna go up, but that's, they didn't, they have no indication of that.
Put down, depending on.
For tariffs. The tariffs, steel?
It's not steel, it's aluminum.
Aluminum, well, we'd like to keep it more of our own aluminum too in Canada. Okay, so do we have some, is that the general thought then that we would, we'll hold off on that?
Sure. Provincial activity.
Okay, so there's a direction on that one. The pile truck. Thoughts on that, it's it seems to be that may not be good to put back on the road as is or with repairs, but um.
Would I, and that you, we take that one away and come back? So maybe we can do an option with it and an option without it, but get you a better update and report back to council on the need and options.
I think that sounds good.
Options, would that include leases or uh?
Rental.
Or contract?
Yep.
Okay, okay, we have consensus on that, great, that's the direction. Okay, let's have a look at year two or sort of particular, we wanna look at the by year or, okay?
Sounds great.
Yes, this is year twenty-six to twenty-seven.
Okay. So where would we like to begin? Top of the list with the big one, Main Street to Mill Street, six and a half million dollars?
That's one of the streets, is it, Aaron? Foster Street, so that would be direction on priority, I guess, of the streets.
That's Foster, yeah.
Yeah.
From, yeah, sorry, yeah, Foster from Main Street to Mill Street. Deputy Mayor?
To me, some of these, we have to figure, are we gonna do the roads? Because I'm not one to spend fifty thousand on an upgrade design review if we're not gonna do the road. That's, that's the stuff of me that I went over. You need to decide what roads we're comfortable spending and that's gonna knock some of these other ones off, at least, that's how I looked at it.
Yeah, if I, if I can just mention too, just so, we're remembering, it's not just about the road surface, it's about what's under the road. And some of these roads have piping infrastructure that's already failed. So whether, we can, we can expect to defer or cancel this completely, but if, you know, based on um the level of service for things like wastewater, we might still have to do it at some point regardless. Yeah, so it's just something to keep going.
So we're gonna switch to that, seven?
So if we go through that in your slides.
We're gonna, I just thought we would look for some uh, a different slide that makes it, gives it the bigger items, the streets and things to look at.
So after that is a good.
Lisa, did you have a comment on this before?
Yeah, um, just more of a question for Director Don Dale. When you talk about the underground infrastructure, do you have a recommendation based on um condition assessment that you would prioritize those streets?
That, so based on the condition of the gravity sewer lines?
Yes.
That's why Foster was kept as the highest priority.
Okay.
Yeah, but next, I believe, based on just sewer condition would be Cottage. And that would be the cottage section between Foster and commercial.
So our discussion here may not be about changing the order because they're in an order of priority pretty much at this point, but might be in changing the timing of is what you're suggesting. So is, is there, is there a basic or general rule that we could put in place like every other year, every three years, to do something like that that would make give you the direction kind of that we're needing to look at?
Yeah, I would suggest every other year wouldn't be um as fully plausible either.
Okay.
Um, but maybe we can look at like every five years. And I could run the deck scenario based on that and direction on which project would happen.
Okay, would that deal with the issue of the fire truck when they're looking for?
Um, it'll go into that, but if council's wish is to redo a road surface every five years, that's gonna tie up your debt capacity, um because the way. Um, because the way we ran that, and again, we only used today's pricing as well, so we didn't have any inflation built into those product, projects, was that we were successful with 50% grant funding as well. And really your streets are huge dollar projects. They're going to tie up your debt service level. Um, you don't have offsetting revenue that's going to come in um to balance that out like you would your wastewater treatment projects. So, I mean, I think one is, you know, we focus on one and then as debt becomes repaid, then we can look at offsetting that. Um, but we do still have a fair amount of debt on the books. It's small, but for a longer duration of time. And a couple that are coming up for refinancing as well.
So if you're suggesting the five, um, one every five years, then we would only see one in the five-year plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Or two smaller ones. I did the two smaller route, the two points on, two points on was less than the 6.5, just saying. You said we're getting two roads done. That's it. It takes the rest of the budget down, but we're getting two roads completed for that. It's like down, when did you get down? We got two roads down. Two. And my second question is, how much are we putting down? Because again, I live on Main. The one section was done wonderfully and totally in a great and the section close to my place. I don't know if that was skim at the end, but it's been ripped up. So here we are, one year in, and it's already ripped everything back up again. And then, then the travel again. If we're looking at Foster, well, we still have that big heavy bus on there. I, I, I know because we have the big heavy trucks that come down to the plant. I understand that. But I mentioned before, if we're going to pay and get these roads fixed properly, are we going to get those buses off that road so it's not doing the damage? I could consult Black in that.
Well, actually, if, if um, the Director of Public Works wants to answer a question, that would be fine and I'll ask my question.
I guess just a comment on that. So along Main Street from Foster to Eden Valley, we skimcoated. Okay, we, we put a, we patched potholes and we looked just to get through the winter. So yeah, from Foster to Eden Valley was a substantially different work scope than what we did east of.
Well, happy to hear that from how it held up.
So we had some other questions in there too, I think.
I was just gonna say, yeah, that even what we did further up Main Street is less than what these projects are completely ripping up the road, putting in a new stable underground and then paving. So these projects are not what we did on Main Street.
No, I, I understand that. I just, I know we paid our buck to get what we get there and that wasn't with anything underground. I understand that, but.
But we might have to do more of what we did on Main Street if we're only going to do a road every five years. Is that something that council has to wrestle with and Erin can provide more information?
Yeah, we, yeah, so the east of, or sorry, west of Foster on Main Street is um one of our operational budget priorities. But we're hoping to get in next this year.
So I have, I have a, some questions around sort of the, the discussion we're having of sort of can we do a major road, say, every five years and finance it and et cetera. Is, is there a risk if we put off some of these roads for too long that we will be forced to dig them up, to fix some stuff that's underneath, like, you know, like if it is a five-year plan per, per road, a road, for example, and so we say Foster really needs to be done, but we'll, we'll do it stages over five years. I think it's kind of what we're talking about or we do it now and not do another one for five years. Are we going to run into some risks where we don't even have the reserves to cover the patching we have to do? Like are we going to give ourselves more? Yeah, so I think the answer that, I mean, the response I'm getting is as well as looking at how we stage these, we also absolutely need to look at what we're doing about the reserves. We cannot, we can't go forward the way we have, I'm saying. This is, this is not easy. So um, because I would agree, I mean, when we do a street, we should do it absolutely right so we don't have to dig it up. Like we shouldn't be covering over a problem and hoping we can ignore it until we die kind of.
The, the point is absolutely, we, we balance two risks.
Yeah.
Financial risk and then the risk to the infrastructure of when you don't do it, right? So you do it and you run into huge financial risk. You don't do it and you run into
Huge financial.
It could come back. Exactly. So that's, that's the exercise we're doing here.
Yeah, you know, I think, I think it's a, a good analogy. It's preventative maintenance versus reactive maintenance. It, it has to be done and we can do it on our terms or we can do it when we absolutely have to. You know, and I, I think that's the value of having it in and keeping it in from a capital standpoint. You know, the reality is, of, of my understanding is a lot of our buried infrastructure is 50-year old concrete pipes. And you know, when, when you look at the CCTV work, you know, those pipes are losing their structural integrity. You know, for short sections, we can run patches and we can, we can repair it. But you know, the cost of a patch for the length of the street would potentially be equal to ripping up the entire street and replacing the substrate in the asphalt and pipe in the sidewalk while it can install. Those patches aren't designed to be kilometers and long. They're designed to be hundreds of meters at best.
And, and is that project, that project cost include replacing all of the sewers and all of the so it's a digital project?
That cost, but you know, I'll just mention too, construction costs are volatile since COVID. You know, these numbers are difficult to predict and they're subject to change, right? Which is just something we have to think of. One, you know, maybe one option you could consider is, is a town would be, you know, to set, set a budget every year or two years or three years and we just do what we can within that budget. At least then it's a relatively fixed cost that we can financially plan for. You know, and maybe, maybe that budget is enough to do a town walk along the street. And we do, maybe Foster becomes a four-year project to actually complete or a four-phase project as opposed to doing the full street. You know, I think about the section of cottage from Foster to commercial. You know, that's a realistic work scope that could be designed very efficiently and constructed within a season. It's relatively minimal impact to the town. Trying to do a street is hell effects of the values of the least, to be honest. But we do need to keep in mind, concrete pipes aren't designed to last forever.
Council.
I guess I tend to agree with that philosophy of doing it in cautious or, or phases and, and taking and getting it done right for first section or second section. And doing a million dollars for the work every year, which would be easier to cash flow than $6 million in one given year or $5 million in another year, you know, uh, the end of Main Street that was done last year. I've had more comments about that being done properly than the patchwork that goes on the other way. Yes, you're always in a state of construction, but it's much easier to plan your equipment, your people and uh, your contract management and, and outside contractors doing that. If they know they're going to get consistent contracts coming into them. So yeah, I have, I would see Foster Street after the traffic flow.
Yeah.
Studies done, Foster Street and some other streets. And if you can't spend it all on Foster Street, Maple or whatever you designated as the proper ones, there are other shorter streets that are up uh, outside of the main corridors that need work as well too. That can be worked out.
So turn to Lisa, is there, is there enough, based on that principle, is there a number that we would, we could work with that in the five-year plan dedicated to street upgrades? We could put, oh, six and a half million dollars in if we're talking about doing a street every five years, then this, the number that's here of one of them is 6.5. So 6.5 to be spent on streets over five years.
Yeah, we, we can do that. Um, we still, like, the town doesn't have enough cash to be able to cash flow. Even a million-dollar project would put strain on it. So we would still need like an operating line, which that's not a big deal. Like um, any interest that's incurred over that goes to your capital project. Um, and interest rates are coming down, so that's more palatable than they have been previously. And then from a, we would still have to borrow for it unless council's interested in increasing taxes enough to cover off um funding that or even any combination thereof. And then essentially I can place the debt, when a phase or a project is complete, then we can go ahead and place the debt. So if you do Foster or whatever it is for six and a half million over five years, we could potentially have five diventures for that project. Say if you divvy it up into like 1.2 for each one. And then it's like 1.2 each year that you're going to see over the life of that um diventure. Or you can enroll it and put it on to one. Like it's really you're, at the end of five years, you're going to be in the same sort of situation, but you'll be repaying it a little bit faster. So it does spread it out. Yeah, you know what I mean? Turn trades over here. Yeah, so I, I think that may be more palatable from the debt service perspective. Rather than trying, I think historically what we've done is a big project, we've maxed out the term, we're able to finance that for, and then we end up refinancing it and that's where we're in the situation where we're still paying for projects that were completed some time ago. So I think it's a better approach.
And so it's, you know, if, if that, we've got a principle to work from, that may be better than trying to go through these items again.
Yeah.
Right, and doing that. So if, if you think that's a something to work on and then we can fine tune it, I guess, perhaps in version three, four, five, six, eight, whatever.
Not eight.
But no, we'll start, we'll start with that.
You're coughing.
Yeah.
Yes, I can bring that.
And that would fall into your reserve, reserve requirements as well and a report on your reserves and debt services.
Debt services, yes. Um, your debt service isn't going to impact your reserves.
Or your total debt.
Total debt.
Yes.
Yes, that's right. Yes. And then the reserves, as you discussed and provided a direction early, all earlier, all run scenarios on what kind of cash flow would be required to keep us in the yellow for the light and operating.
Okay, so I think we have, we've dealt with uh, what we wanted to do tonight with the capital budget. Are we good with that?
For capital, yes.
For capital, yes. But we still have one item to get back to, but I wanted to close this uh,
Yes.
close the capital piece. Okay. All right, so let's go on to the, to the discussion then on so the, the action item that came from what the first budget night was whether or not we wanted to consider the two positions. And at that time, there was the action item was we could look at um, fine-tune the cost of those. And then based on kind of the further budget direction, we did not discuss it. So I guess the conversation tonight would be, do we want to throw that back in? To remember our last operating budget review was about trying to get us down from the hundred and from the under, under $180,000 deficit that we were looking at. So I'll throw that open at this point for some more conversation on, on that. Uh, just a reminder that on Thursday night, we will be having further conversation on the operating budget.
We actually
decided not to.
Well, staff isn't available. It wasn't on anyone's radar to have budget at that discussion.
So on Thursday night, we will not be having a conversation on the operating budget as we had talked previously. So it'll be, it'll be another day, but the idea would be, do we want to provide direction to fine tune those costs at this point? So, wrote up there.
We will at some point have uh, uh, public discussions of budget.
Yes, we have a tentative date or pretty, we're hoping it's going to be good, February.
The 27th at 6:30 at the Lions Hall.
27th.
Right, it's a Thursday, Thursday evening at Lions Hall.
I don't have my ready thing, but I'll be there, but I'm.
You don't have one.
So thoughts on those two positions?
Any discussion as it went to sharing those positions with other needs within other municipalities? Sometimes you can, sometimes you can't and, but sometimes you have to ask the question.
Um, haven't had any feedback on that and haven't asked a question on those two. For today.
Possible to get contract on those positions.
As opposed to a permanent employee?
Yes.
So I believe that for the bylaw officer potentially, the parks position, I feel that we're in a precarious position with the union on how so I would like to get more of a legal opinion and possibly be an in-camera item to discuss whether that position could be contracted because I think you run the risk of whether it's taking away unionized work. So I would want to be able to provide that legal opinion or comments on whether that's possible.
Well, you're saying you'll bring it back.
I can bring back those two items. Um, I think for the bylaw officer piece, you can put it in the budget as similar amount. It's just whether or not you're hiring them as a employee or as a contractor and we can give that range of what that would be.
We, we don't have the range at this point.
So I was concerned that the amount that we used was low. I did sort of take a look at what the County of Kings pays for their bylaw officer and don't feel that our amount was too low. Our hours might want to be increased, but we were a budget implication of about 29,000. Um, I would maybe put that to 35 to say, to be safe. But again, we would flush it a little bit more, but that was the information I wanted to gather.
Deputy Mayor, is that based on, just starting out, again, I just know there's different ranges.
Mm-hmm. That would be sort of at the beginning. So they could come back and say that they
Thirty-year veteran or 30 years experience and they're applying now because they're retiring.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So we could give a range.
Yep, that was, that's, I would see a second lower range. So we did have a range presented the first night for both positions. We're going to fine tune the ranges and bring them back if we have the interest.
Yes, I think based on the variance, we were just looking for direction again on whether you want the information provided and still considered with the gap you're trying to close. And considering you want to look at reserve levels and replenishing those. So we'll leave that on the table.
And there is the other issue that was brought up from the Audit Committee that you guys couldn't bring forward. And there is the other issue that was brought up from the audit committee that was going to bring forward, that they are looking for more assurances of audit completion and audit documentation.
Yes. Which would come with.
Which would come with.
An additional budget cost. Yes.
So I think perhaps you reminded me of that. I think, Councilor Davis, do you want to elaborate for council a little bit more about that? Because I do think, and I don't know if you adjusted a number or not based on that, but I think that would be as relevant for this discussion about adding. Who knows that?
I, I guess, I can't go back on the full history, but I'll say somewhere in and around 2014, the town has been challenged with making sure that the reconciliations that occur, which is one of your main components of, of documentation for the town to ensure that their, the books are in proper and good standing, is, has occurred and continues to occur. And we've been in a catch-up continue improvement situation sense, but we have not fully caught up. We are probably still three, six, maybe further months along to be fully caught up. While we continue to do the added work that comes along with our solar gardens area, our IMSAs, inter-municipal service agreements, and our other duties and responsibilities that have to occur, plus making sure staff are are working hours to keep them safe.
Yes.
So in a nutshell, we're behind, we need extra resources to pick it up. How much? I'll let Lisa elaborate on that. I.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm saying it's, it's a part, at least a part-time position.
Yeah. Yes. So we're still looking at what that resourcing looks like. I had a meeting this morning with our consultant and our accountant to kind of get a better grasp on things. At this point, I'm thinking it'd be a part-time person, just on a contract basis, until we can get things to a normal state. The audit committee did request or gently recommend that everything be in place by June 30. So I would look at a part-time person to support that and then bring that budget item back for council's consideration. Because it's required sooner rather than later, it would be essentially an out-of-budget item from partial for this year and then the balance in next year's budget as well.
So I think it's a matter of what priority we want to set.
Absolutely.
And when we talk about not two positions, but probably three positions that we have to, partially three positions that we have to fund. So I don't know what a contract position would cost there, but it would take up some.
Yes.
Chunk of change.
Yeah, absolutely.
So just the good news.
Yes.
You have to see the good news.
So our council's wishes then to, at this point, to use those, fine tune them somewhat, not spend a whole lot of time. I think the conversation at the time was look at all the various options for this. But I think at this point, it's just slotting in those, or maybe those original numbers with some fine tuning and the number that Lisa's suggesting for the other person for our, for our meeting to review the operating budget.
Yes, and so the contract and sharing of service with other municipalities.
That, that can be an option if we find we have a number that we can go forward with position to find, to make it smaller, but I think at this point.
If I have time, I'll try to get that information, but we'll get the full number and then potentially what that impact would be.
All right, so does that deal with our, our budget items for tonight? Okay, we have a few items, correspondence, quick marriage report, and we do have a couple of in-camera items. So can we call a five-minute break and then come back and deal with those? And, okay, so we'll, we'll be back at, well, let's go, we'll go all the way to five to nine. Okay, so we're on item number six, correspondence. We do have a number of them, I have four I want to share with you. Two of them are in front of you, the Casey and Brooke Johnson. You have a copy of that?
Yeah, we do.
Copy of that? And have read that. They spread a phone call from Casey and Brooke's grandfather over the weekend to tell me how happy he was that they won the provincial, part of a team that won the provincial skating, precision skating championships, and they're off to nationals. And now they're seeking funding to, to do, to get there for their trip. And so then I talked to him about the fact that we would need a letter, he, he was wondering if council would provide any support. We, we have in the past, it happens rarely that we do, simply because we've really not provided funding to, to regular sport things, but only when it gets elevated to like a nationals. Because it doesn't happen very often that anybody from the Burwick area goes to a national event. Lots of them go to provincials, lots of them go to the tournament, Moncton or, or somewhere. That's why we don't really fund those. But what happens at the provincial with the national situation for most sports is you go off and you, you play in the provincial championship. And if you're lucky to win it, then all of a sudden, you're now going off to a national championship at two weeks' time, of which you had no preparation for. That's just the nature of, of what happens. So most of these teams and individuals are stuck in a place at which they had no idea they were going to be into as much as, you know, a couple of weeks or a month earlier. So anyway, I asked for the letter, this was the letter that their mother wrote. And so that's what you see for, so they are doing some of their own fundraising. And they are, she did not mention the amount, she's just kind of put it out there with, council being interested in providing any support. The, the email is actually a donation, e-transfer email. If anybody wants to make a donation, you can do it that way as well. Coincidentally, we actually have another group from Burwick that are going to the nationals fundraising. We have a junior curling team. Lockhart. Felix Lockhart's team is going to the nationals in Saskatoon, and they're in the midst of fundraising. They have not sent anything directly to, to me or to council for their fundraising, but we can tell you it's a similar situation. So it's, anyway, we do have that request. We want to consider anything on that. Now would be a time. Any thoughts?
Do we have any funds that we have not drawn? Like, I know we, we used to have that you put in, I don't know if it was $3,000, and the seniors got a lot, but there was always a little left door, but that's probably not.
And maybe we took it out of the budget, it's four years in my memory, so it's because it once was.
Yeah.
This is, this is unusual, and it's, I, I'm struggling with requests, and I understand exactly what they're going through. Because, yeah, it's apparent of a competitive dancer. I'm the, we went to Worlds. No one supported us even. Yeah, but I, but I also understand, but I'm trying, as I read it, I'm wondering if they're actually asking for us to buy tickets on their basket, or, but what you're really saying is they're, they're sort of wondering if there's any money we could forward towards, because it's not clear from that letter at all.
No, it's, it's not as, no, maybe I wasn't clear to her that if you were asking council for something, you should write a letter and tell us what it's all about, give us the background and make a request. The request piece isn't really there, background.
But it's also really, I mean, it's, it's also amazing that we have a bunch of different people going to national events, and it's.
Can you have a call?
Yeah, sorry, and I might have missed this, but if they're a resident of the County of Kings and not the town of Burwick, the County of Kings has funding available for provincial national.
They live over Cottage Street.
I was just saying, no, they're both.
A lot of them.
Nightfall, they're asking.
Yeah.
Cottage Street and County of Kings.
I know, right? One end or something, sorry, I wasn't, yeah, I just wanted to bring up that point.
And that made me why the, yeah. Yeah.
They didn't have a grant program.
Yeah.
And what's their grant, like, do we know what, like, grants they give? I know the simulations on very intensive individual, but beyond that, I'm not.
We don't know what.
Justin, you.
Yeah, I'm just a little, I guess, I'm not saying I don't want to do it, I'm just worried about the optics and how we're trying to have to cut everything. We have to come up with $180,000. And, well, we're just going to give money away to a couple of residents? It, it doesn't look good if we're making all these cuts, but then we got money to help these guys. I'm not saying we don't do it, but like, it, it's just the optics don't sit right with me, that's all.
I mean, I don't know if people are envisioning for money here, but I'm, I mean, in the, in the past, this is, this is in the, in the $100 range. This is not in the $1,000 range. This is just a, a token level of support for the wishes of lots, councils done in the past. So, I mean, it's, there is no policy, there's no guidelines for this. So I, I'm just kind of giving you more of the historical perspective than I am any kind of suggestions here, so.
We don't have any reserves within our, within our donation package, as I understand it.
There is no donation package.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
We don't have the candy chest or whatever.
I feel like you're like seconds away from like standing up and pulling your pockets out.
We're not talking next, we're not talking about putting this into the budget for next year. This is something that they're going in a couple of weeks, we're gonna, you know, if we're going to do it, it would be something that would come in this, this year would be a donation, so.
So I, I mean, it sounds really hard-hearted, but I'm kind of with Justin in saying it's, it's hard for us to sort of do this, particularly since we don't have a policy. If we had a policy, then we would have a budget line and we would have, you know, something like, you know, for provincial events, you know, we would, we would, and we'd be putting money aside. But I, I guess I'm just sort of trying to think of how we could soften the blow if we said no. Because, I mean, definitely we should be at some level in our social media recognizing these girls and what they're doing, and perhaps even, you know, saying something. But, and as, you know, a resident of the town, any one of us could provide some money, but that's not, that's not, I mean, that, that's different than the town doing. Like, I'd sort of say, like, I feel fairly strongly about this, that would be the action. I don't know if that's a fair decision, if that makes sense.
Any others, I mean, if we don't get it, we don't want to do it, we don't get a motion, we just.
Yeah, no, that's right.
So we just move on, so we're not going to beat this to death, I just, if someone wants to suggest something and. I know we're scrambling to try to find $180,000 or more in the next budget. But we have a $6 million operating budget in this town.
Yeah.
Find two million.
Two million?
Two hundred or twenty dollars.
It's okay, it's okay.
Okay? That's twice I've ever given more attention. Anyway, just leave that.
Yes, I mean, I would, I would love to see us have policy in a way of dealing with these kinds of things when they come up. So it's just a straightforward, easy thing to do, and, and it's, it's known. And I also, you know, wonder if, if, you know, if it. We'd like to see it happen more often, so maybe we should be thinking about it. And so I'm not, you know, I'm not really saying.
Probably the reason we've never had a policy is it's, the time and effort we spend to make it a policy, it's so happens so infrequently that we, and to put money aside in the budget for, for athletes to go to national competitions, well, we never spend it.
Yeah, I feel like every time we get an ax like this, it normally is around this time of year, like, and at this point in budget, too. I remember this even like eight years ago, and there was a girls' hockey team that was going to nationals. And we, we were like looking at like our budget and thought, ugh.
So what did you do?
We did nothing. Yeah, that said, there, there's, there is a potential for a small token, right? Like, I'm thinking even like a $100 gift card. I mean, I'm thinking even, you know, like our, our, like, I've got $100 worth of receipts right now that I could probably put in for like our, our town. What is it called, or? Yeah, well, not the expense, the wellness, yeah, sorry, word was not there tonight, the wellness. You know, I mean, I could not turn in $100 worth of receipts and just feel better knowing that, like, they were getting a $100 gift card from the town, right? Just for, just for the sentiment of your town supports you, but this much. Yeah.
Councilor Serino, I think you have your hand up.
No, like, is that an option? Because I'd be willing to offer up my $200 wellness thing up for the donation. I can go without the $200. And I, I get a buddy, and I also get it budgeted through the military anyway, so I got, I'm, I'm like double covered, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm, so how, I'm not sure how that would, so that would be a budgeted amount that could be in our budget of which we're not going to spend, of which you know that, but.
Benefit.
Be a taxable benefit.
In '24, '25, because the policy wasn't approved.
Okay, so fair enough.
Yeah.
So that's not actually a budget.
I know it doesn't give me.
Let me just grab that paper and ball it up and throw it behind my shoulder.
I know it doesn't give the money in their hands, but a letter from, from the town recognizing their great achievements and encouraging them to do their best that they can in the future would go somewhere. It's not the dollars and cents, and it may be, yes, crumpled up, but I, I know people that have held on to those letters for a long period of time and have recognized that this has been a benefit to them, at least to be recognized. And the higher up it comes, the better. But, you know, a hundred bucks would go a long ways, too.
Personally, I would be embarrassed knowing that they're looking for financial assistance to write them a letter in the day. Good luck, good luck, but we can't give you any money. You know, I don't, and congratulations, what a great job. Aren't you sorry? I mean, I was the council.
But you could encourage, you could say, you could encourage a counselor or counselors to, to make a donation to that site.
Yeah. And if we felt that counselors were going to do that, then the letter would say, and council has agreed that some of the counselors would, would make an individual donation, that would be wonderful. I think that's, but I wouldn't want to tell them that and then, no.
We do stuff similar to that, and I said that, but we, we told people for years of service at the fire hall and other things, for anniversaries, we do up certificates, and I don't think it means any less, and I, I'm not comparing this, I know it's an house for money.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I, I would, I mean, you could do that and I would send them something, okay, so you can be sure that, you know, because I, I think we should have some way of supporting people and, and it would, I mean, it will makes, if no one else, it'll make their family think better of us. And if all we do, if we do nothing, they won't think very much of us at all, and if all we do is send a letter, it's kind of like, well, you know, what, what can I do with that, and I, I mean, when I'm, when I'm reading the letter and they're talking about, um, you can buy the sleeves or the beads or the earrings or their hair ties or makeup, they're, they're looking for, I mean, there's a lot of little expenses in what they're doing, and I understand that totally. And I think that, um, so, but I'm thinking that, you know, would it be possible, the other way to deal with this is for us to have some sort of non-budget fund that perhaps, you know, I think you mentioned.
Anniversary?
Like, yeah, that, that is, doesn't come under the budget, but, um, but. So we would, we would think as a counselor, we might donate money to it or whatever, and it would, would be, no?
So Kate?
No.
Just gonna ask our, our Apple Fund.
And that's what we're just, and so I just brought up the application to look through this. And maybe it's just my understanding or my perception, but I will double check, my perception of that it is to support those who are facing financial, financial hardships in, in the TV feeds associated with that, that is, I just read over the document, um. Do like grassroots kind of, well, get to participation in, right, there's lots of people, people can't afford their equipment, they want to join as well. So that is just my understanding of it, that is not what is said in the application, I'm actually not one of that approved sort of sides. Um, that goes through our community record meter, Taylor, so I did put a note that I would follow up with her on that, so I don't want to speak to it, that might be just the perception of what I believe it to be.
We don't have to respond to them tonight, if we thought it was an option that we would send them. But there is, we're leaving it to you, so, um, application review process, get back here the first April is not a good answer, but anyway.
Can I ask what amount you're thinking of, like, if it's a hundred dollars, I, I understand your principle about we're trying to cut funds, but a hundred dollars isn't going to make or break our, your end.
I've kind of been waiting for you to say this.
However, as long as this isn't setting a present to every single one that comes up and, and opens a door, but I'm just, we're spending a lot of time to talk about a hundred dollars that.
Exactly.
Four million, twenty second conversation.
Right, so I'm just trying to get.
Hundred dollars, let's take twenty minutes at least. I'd make a motion that we make a hundred dollar donation.
With the letter, congratulations, ladies and gentlemen, a hundred dollars to each of them or to the pair?
To each, a hundred dollars each, so two hundred dollars total.
Pretending not there.
Well, no, I was just putting that out there.
I just wanted to clarify for the seconder, we didn't have a seconder, but I think Justin added his piece to your motion.
As amended.
Counselor Lawson, are you okay with this?
I am A O K with this.
So, we have a seconder. Counselor Serino, you gonna second that?
Yes, I'm sorry, it hurts, it hurts to laugh, I'm sorry.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion's carried, okay.
Okay, who needs five dollars, because I bet we can really break that.
That might be the next one, so that's Apple Blossom.
As well, so that if they do come an issue, we can report back on it, but to this one, I think we're, we're okay.
I hope, that, that would be wonderful, to think that we, this became an issue, and then we were getting requests from all kinds of kids to go to national competitions from the town of Berwick.
Yeah.
That would be huge, um, and you know what, it's.
Yep.
It's not, it's not, it's not creative policy, you know, well, when we get over, um,
All the other policies.
We'll get over, uh, three decade, maybe we'll start a policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, the next one there is regarding the, uh, the Apple Blossom Festival, and, uh, they're looking for a municipal contribution. You see there, we don't have a side on this tonight, but the letter came forward, we could throw it into the, uh, the budgeting mix for, um, our next conversation on our operating.
Question on, on, uh, the Apple Blossom Festival and Berwick's economic uh benefits from it, uh, do we have any feedback on its economic benefits on the town of Berwick?
Don't think we have any. Our facts or anecdotes on that.
We had the, we have the opening event here last year.
That, that was well attended, so.
Yeah, that's the whole. And I, just to note, I've been asked to be one of the judges, I have to check my schedule, get back to the tour for the parade tonight, as part of the Apple Blossom, so. I can tell you, this has been a longstanding issue about each municipality supporting Apple Blossom over the years and, and the events that would occur or not occur, what, you know, what did you, uh, what benefits did you get from contributing to Apple Blossom and, um, and then the cost that you had, and at, at one time, we had a line item that included, um, the contribution, because there was a request, required contribution from municipalities bought into, there was the phone cost, then there were a cost associated with, uh, with your princess, you provided support for their dresses and those kinds of things. Um, and then if you did any other event, then you were on the.
Well, we should have spoken to this, but you like it, yes, you remember those days.
The town is very generous.
Yeah.
Back in the olden days.
Not that old, yeah, um, and at one time, if you had an event in your town, then you actually had to pay a fee to the Apple Blossom, because you called it the Apple Blossom, whatever your event may be, and there was, you know, huge disagreement to, to that, and that left, anyway, it's, there's been, but of course, it's a huge contributor to the economy of the, of the Annapolis Valley, brings lots of people in here, and they make lots of good reasons why the valley should support it, so.
I don't, we're contributing to the valley rent, which is to look at the economic opportunities on behalf of the town, and uh, I, I know that this is totally different, and someone asked me for more money or money to have things happen, but I just keep questioning, you know, it's been a long time since I participated in some of those Apple Blossom festivals.
You watch it, we're gonna end up marching the parade and keep going on this.
You have my vote, not the judge.
It's fixed already.
They have done some economic impact assessments on the Apple Blossom, primarily around the parade, I actually saw one not too long ago, because I was looking up some stuff, I had a a file on different economic impact assessments on various events, Blossom, Apple Blossom festivals there, um, but that, that would have been centered in the town of Kenful, around parade time, right, that's, that's when they would do that, so, the impact on Berwick or Aylesford or Middleton, I don't think has ever been, been done.
Do we have any events that we want?
I have no idea what the schedule is this year.
We're reporting in a flight.
We do, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have money in the budget for this.
So that's our contribution.
And there's a fee to put a float in, right?
No, there's, no, we just, um, we decorate because we're, we're utilities and that, and we also have blossom leadership as a theme, so we decorate, so.
So we'll defer this discussion to our list of budget items, um, since it's not time sensitive like the other one.
But.
And then we'll kick this around like we do with.
Is I, is ever that, so, seeking sponsorships from five hundred to five thousand, so, at the five hundred though, you're still getting the same benefits as five thousand, all right?
Um, it's usually size of your name, like in a banner, like if you're the five hundred dollars ones are this big, and the five thousand ones are this big.
Yeah.
Like it's some of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so we're still there, there are five hundred, that's our hair, so, yeah, that's.
What have we done traditionally?
Well, they haven't had this kind of program recently, I, I mean.
We haven't contributed to this thing so well.
Um, last year, we didn't.
We did not, in years past, we contributed, um, for sponsorship for the pageant, but since the pageant has been won, we we had the one year sponsorship when it was first, um, launched as leadership, but when they moved away from having, uh, representatives from each community, um, we removed our sponsorship from that, so other than, um, designing and creating the parade vote for the last two years, that's been our only.
It's point, bring something else forward.
Maybe we could find, if, if there's an event in Berwick, maybe we wanna support that event in some, some way, shape or form, and if.
If it brings economic benefit to the town.
Well, I mean, I think people came from outside the town to go to the event, but I don't know for sure, I didn't go. It wasn't too late. It's like on Thursday night.
Was it?
Wednesday night, Wednesday night, we actually.
Yeah.
So.
I don't, yeah.
So, uh, nothing, I mean, if somebody wants to, between now and our next meeting on this, look up the Apple Blossom Festival and see if they have any events scheduled.
I was gonna say, I, uh, I personally go back quite a long time with Erica Gillis as well through, uh, student leadership, so, I might spark up a conversation there and see what she might have in mind for this year's festival too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we put up the letter from Anna Harson. Next one then, so, um, Katie and I had the panel on, um, Friday, just to kind of clarify things a little bit more, um, and, um, I thought we were kind of good with the, she asked what we needed now, and it was kind of a little patience, a little bit of time, so we could resolve some of her questions and come back, um, she was, we had told her what council had decided regarding the upgrades to the box cars, she was certainly looking for some more there and, and needing to know in a few weeks, but apparently their organization has decided, uh, not to continue. And she sent Katie and I a letter, so. So, you can read it yourself there, um. So they're decided not to, not to move forward, um. No comment about later or next year, she was even talking about one, doing one weekend with us on Friday, or, you know, one, she had started and tried and got starting later, um, so apparently they're. But there is no question that they were looking for, if it got off the ground when they, for the summer, they were looking at pretty much full-time use of the. Yeah.
Site.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's disappointing, it's, it's a cultural event, and it's an event that will probably find another town, another location, uh, I'm disappointed that it, it can't happen, because there's more to the town than just the operations, uh, what we have up at the school and at KMCC. Having something besides just murals in town and an ongoing activity, you see the hurry in a large number of towns, you go to San Diego, you go, go to Cologne, uh, Germany, you go all around the world, we see these pop up, weekend fairs, and they do very well, and they do bring in, uh, do bring in new component of people to the town. I'm disappointed, but if you can, she also, I know, needed a firm commitment or something.
And we, and we did offer other locations around town that were more permanent, um, certain, we try, and, and again, I, and I understand that the vision that they were working with was site-specific, um.
You did, did say that.
Yes, in writing, that we were happy to explore other options with the discuss Carol's place, discuss Report Park, absolutely.
Yeah, and I, and I could see where Carol's place would have worked for a year and, you know, give you a chance to work into getting that going, but obviously, they could.
Now, you didn't respond to it, did you respond?
No, I have not responded.
And neither have I, I mean, we could, if we wanted to say that we're disappointed in that, and if there's any opportunity in the future, we'd love to, uh.
We need, we need more time in order to do it, and, uh, all the only other options are Carol's place or give us time, because those cars are not safe.
Based on what I heard.
I was gonna say, I take Eric's word for it, that's what I heard it tell.
Is, would you like us to do that, between Katie and I, or whoever?
I think, I think she should be responded to and, and.
Yeah.
Say that, you know, if there's a way where to work forward in the future, we, but we need time to do it as a town, no government organization can come up with a solution overnight, I've yet to be involved with one that has. Yeah, I shouldn't say that, it was a, a major decision.
Well, we were, we were getting to a point where the, we were gonna upgrade those boxcars for minimum use, she, um, apparently, that did not fly with them, but she talked about even providing the funding to paint them, they look after that, so, okay. There is more than just her involved, she's according, I have, they have, she has board to five, I think so.
I should expect your sister is involved too.
Have you read the names, who was it, with her sister?
Susan Spicer, Susan Spicer, yeah, she's just. Just down over there.
Come straight over, and the other letter I wanted to share with you, um, Jennifer and I entertained two gentlemen from Toronto who were here to look at, uh, immigration, employment, housing opportunities and, um, and, uh, possible development with, um, their focus is on Muslim immigrants who have been displaced and are doing, or being brought to Canada, they had, uh, I had the number wrong, Jennifer, fifteen that were being, going to work at Eden Valley and eleven going to Michelin, this point.
Around that.
Yeah, um, so we toured them around the area and, uh, gave them some apples and some Berwick swag, and, and they were quite happy, and, uh, we did agree to send them some information too, so I, I emailed them that, um, they actually were, as part of some of their developments that their national organization does, includes hotels, um, so I sent them the information we had done on the hotel stuff, um, who knows what will come out of this, although they did say they're gonna come back and, uh, they'll be sure to make contact with us, so they were interested as well to talk to the Randivo development opportunities. Yeah, so, anyway, I want to share that with you. I mean, you guys are Mr. Bencher, and there we are, yeah.
Sorry, I'll just go back to that Anna Horson one, we should, having seen this, we should probably refer her to rent too. Because I think, you know, when they're star program, if it's in Berwick, yes, great, but if, you know, there's the whole valley.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, okay, but it's just, we'll do that, the next item is the mayor's report, you'll see. Counselor, you want to show the mayor's report?
No, no, not before you left the court.
Oh, darn.
Could we get an update on the sixth, for anyone who attended the festival, February sixth, the, uh, six thirty, I believe.
Oh, the proclamation.
Yes.
Yeah, um, that was a.
Yeah, well, I, I did.
You did a great job last night telling the people about it, so.
I guess, so I, I actually, I did. I guess, so I I actually, I did, did tell a many reports, which I shared with the accessibility thing, so. So the mayor, Councilor Jamison, Councilor Goddard and I all went. It was a really well-run event, it was really well-attended. They had to bring in more seats into the area than they had planned, and they'd already put in a lot of extra seats over and above the the sort of the public area in the chambers. It, the event, the entire event was hosted by the Afri Centre cohort from Horton High, so the students led, and I think they've done that in the past as well. The, all of the councillors, the elected officials that attended, plus representatives of the our courses and representatives of the RCMP, we were led into the chambers as sort of the official proclamation, whatever. We were drummed in by a group of African drummers from the, from Horton High. The content of the presentations was amazing. Everything from a grade seven student reading a poem to various presentations by various people, including the Deputy Minister of Afri. And what's.
African Affairs.
African Affairs, it's not, that doesn't sound quite right, but that is.
Cultural Affairs.
Yeah, and was there and and brought readings, et cetera, and talked about the event. And then there was a video that was done by the minister, both of which were enlightening. It was an uplifting, fun experience and I was just really impressed with how it went. Berwick had a great representation, we, the girl, what?
Girl guys.
The girl, oh yes, the girl guys, Berwick, their group was there. Of this area, well, that there, that that group of, that group is actually very active group and it was lovely to see. But I came away just so impressed, but also really understanding the importance of what Diversity Kings is doing around their inclusion work, because they're trying really hard to make you know, people who are diverse in various ways feel welcome into the the sort of the community and feel comfortable coming into a place like the council chambers and speaking and and being part of the community from that perspective as well, and it's definitely working. Despite the somewhat difficult drive home, because the snow had really come down while we were there. It was, I was really glad I went. Really told us something about how important it is to come up with special events that allow the community to participate with each other. And I was, I was told that that was the best attendance they'd ever had.
Councilor Goddard, Jameson, anything to add to that?
That's gonna perish them somewhere. I want a door prize. A book by Michelle Obama and a book about the students who were there and a nice notebook and pen. And it was two numbers off and you're only one.
One number off. Okay.
So, mayor's report, it's there in front, if you have any questions, let me know. And I think we're ready to entertain.
Oh, you got a question?
I do have, no, I want to state that I was at, you weren't at the Valley REN meeting this morning.
Yes, I was, actually.
I didn't see you on.
I was having trouble getting on there, that's why I didn't, I didn't chime in on that discussion, I, I didn't know my audio was on, I was pressed the button, I just, yeah, so I'm glad that you did what you did, because I couldn't.
Oh, it's lower, you're there, but basically, as you, as you said, that an invitation effectively to Annapolis County to join the Valley REN and the discussion was, as low as our cost of.
So my part was assisted on that, which is good.
Well, just to clarify, the implication is that we only get so much money from the province for Valley REN and it's matched by the municipalities, if Annapolis County joins Valley REN, the province has not indicated or promised any additional funding. So you'd be adding a territory, not equal to, but a significant territory and service delivery without additional funding. And the funding that they would pay based on their percentage would still be a small percentage to cover additional resources. So the thought is, the intention is to see if they're interested. Then you would need to find out if there's funding from the province and then actually all the municipal partners would still have to ratify that. So we're, it's the first step in.
First step.
In inviting and showing the intention of welcoming them into the Valley REN.
But it is the right thing to do, to have them inside the Valley REN, I think, as long as it doesn't cost you, see?
Well, I think it's even more than cost, it's the impact that it could have on the services that REN provides to the current partners. And so that's the piece that needs to be worked out and I think also advocating, but advocacy to the province about their funding role in the RENs and that there's been no increase since two thousand fourteen. No escalation in costs on either side, from municipal or the province, and so if they are going to join, there should be some additional funds coming from the province to ensure that we have proper resources to fund the area that they've identified.
But that REN used to be part of the Department of Economic, Rural Development, Tourism, and the reason it was spun off was to try to get it into local hands, doing local work. Province should really build it up to the bar, because they would have had to put that extra resources into that department if they had.
Some other issues around that is, the geography alone creates a huge impact on how the REN would have to add services. Like, if a town is in a route in Kings County, well, really doesn't make a lot of difference other staff, but now they're talking, if you add Annapolis County, now you might need satellite offices, and then you might need additional staff for that. And then one of the other issues is that we, if they want in, because they're part of the region, there may not be a choice, from the province will say, yes, you must accept them and here's the, here's the money that goes along with it, but whether or not that makes enough, there's enough money to make a service area, what the services provide will differ based on the staff they have and the way they divide them up. One of the other stats that they mentioned, I think, right now the Valley REN has twelve staff and if they add Annapolis County, they'd be the same size as Cape Breton and Cape Breton has twenty-seven. So, I mean, that's rather bad, anyway, that's, I've seen it happen. Okay, so, anything else from that, motion to go on camera? Move by Councilor Loos and second to Councilor Jamison, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now in camera. We've been extreme soldier, walking up the park.
Don't leave these flames going behind you, really.
Don't you leave me there.